As I go to the Mount Pleasant Public Schools Board of Education, we're in a meeting on September 18, 2023 at 6:30 PM in the Mount Pleasant High School faculty area. This meeting of the Mount Pleasant Public Schools Board of Education is a meeting conducted in public, but it's not a meeting of the public. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. The purpose of today's meeting is to conduct regular business and various actions by the board. These items may include those discussed at previous meetings or presented to the board for discussion this evening. At this time, I'd like you to turn off the cell phone and stand for our page of the meeting.
I want to introduce you to the flag of the United States of America and to read your public, which stands "One Nation, Underout, Indivisible, for the Freedom and Justice for All."
I am going to read our indigenous land acknowledgements. Mount Pleasant Public Schools is honored to acknowledge the Anishinaabe people whose traditional land we are gathered on today. To recognize the Anishinaabe people and their ancestral land is our expression of gratitude and appreciation, and a way of honoring the indigenous people who have been living and working on this land since standing memorial and whose land on which the second archibug Indian tribe have resided and who have continued to reside on the Sanjubu. We feel it is important to understand the longstanding history of this land and to seek to understand our place within that history. At this time, we're going to do a roll call.
Take a look here.
We didn't pango here.
Melissa Isaac, monkey here.
Can you read here? Jessica Dragan here.
Nathan Thompson here.
We have to start with the approval of our agenda. Is there a motion to approve our agenda?
So.
And then, on paper?
On my.
Any opposed? Thank you, everybody. And we're getting around to our superintendent report.
Good evening, everyone. The first item under our records this evening is an annual update from our technology department. So I want to introduce you to Joe Judge, our chief information officer. Mr. Bean, here you are.
Good evening. We've actually had a lot happen since we've done this the last... Can you... Is that on? Okay, I'll talk about. So, starting with last fall, the biggest undertaking our technology department has had in a lot of years was the switch to a one-to-one Chromebook program with the district. Are you chewing on it? Yes. There we go. Okay, so I'll start over then. Last fall, we started with one of the biggest projects that we've taken on in my tenure here was the one-to-one Chromebook initiative. Last summer, we set up over 1,700 student Chromebooks, grade six through 12, and over 80 parts of Chromebooks for the JK through five classrooms. We created a room at the high school where students can come for questions and come in and have their Chromebooks repaired. It was a big learning curve, being a new project like that. We learned a lot last year because we didn't know what to expect was going to come to us as far as damages, loss, things like that. So we did learn a lot last year, which caused us to tweak some of the ways we did things this year. We kind of changed our repair process up a little bit so we can try to turn them around faster and how we get Chromebooks to new students quickly so they can get going and kind of hit the ground running when they come. Overall, we feel that the program was a great success. And this year, so we turned it over, we distributed it to the new sixth graders this year when they came in and new students that came into the district, and we thought it went very well. So that was a big thing to take on. Spring of the year is the online testing season. That's another big, busy time for us. NWA, M-Step, MyAccess, WEDA, and this year, SAT portions are going online. Students having the Chromebooks made it easier for teachers to test in their classrooms and not have to sign up for computer labs and try to share. So it made the testing piece easier on the teacher end, which was really nice. The testing season was really successful and, you know, we'll get ready to turn it around again this spring and move forward with that. Also, in the spring, we began implementing final forms on the academic side of the district. We'd been using final forms to do athletic sign-ups and things like that, and we moved over to final forms this year on the academic side for the registration process and the forms that parents need to fill out for their students. That process went on through the summer and was implemented in the fall, and we're quite happy with how that's gone. That was another big project, but it seemed to have gone very well. Another thing we did this spring, as you've seen, are the new digital signs at the elementary schools. Those turned out really nice. We're happy with that. We have one more coming that's going out that'll be at the Oasis building. They're just waiting on some backordered parts to get that here and get it completed, and that one should be going in hopefully before it snows. Very busy summer. We did computer lab overhauls. We replaced the teaching labs at Ganyard, Pullen, Bowles, McGuire, and Fancher. We replaced the two teaching labs at the middle school and the two media center labs at the middle school and high school, and we updated all of the computers on the media center floors at the middle school and the high school. We removed two labs at the high school, two at the middle school, one at Fancher and one at McGuire, and those areas were converted back to classroom spaces. So we took some of the older computer labs out. We had the technology work that we had to do for the bond that followed the construction. So when the cafeteria was finished at the middle school, we put in a new AV system in there, all new sound projection. That turned out great, middle school office technology conference room, and then we will do the same with the weight rooms. If they get to the point where we're working in them, they will get all new technology as well. Projects coming up. The elementary PA replacement project is in process, and we're getting ready to start the large venue AV remodel, which is the new sound systems and projection systems in all the gyms and cafeterias through the district. Those should be starting, hopefully, November if everything can get here and get ready to go. And then we're just getting ready to go out to bid for new handheld radios through a safety grant in the district, and that will be... They're about six to eight weeks out on delivery, so by the time we get the bid, get them ordered, probably a Christmas time project that we're hoping to get that rolling and get all the handhelds replaced in the district and all the classrooms and offices. That is my report. Glad to take any questions if you have.
Do you think you could do any more? Goodness gracious.
Yeah, we can.
You can do it, great.
We don't get bored. We stay busy.
I'm glad you had some older technologies. Power School, how is Power School working out? We've had that down in the district for what, eight years?
Actually, Mount Pleasant started Power School in 2012.
Oh, really?
Yeah. It's a great program. It meets the needs, provides the access to parents, students, pretty easy to use for teachers and offices.
Do we track how many families actually enroll in the system or leverage?
Yes, we can report on that, yes. We get a report at the end of the year about how many times each parent accesses, who set up accounts. Yeah, we do have all that information.
Thank you.
Joe, it's great to hear the one-on-one initiative was so successful. I think it was such a big deal for our district, especially coming up virtual learning, and to hear that you managed to do this. From our perspective, it seemed pretty smooth. I mean, I'm sure it felt pretty on the other side, but hearing too that you benefited the labor testing, the online testing easier is great. So thank you, that's another word. And to hear that on top of that, you were doing all the app, like the computer app space. So it's quite a no deal there.
Thank you.
Joe, will you talk a little bit just about the replacement plan and life cycles of devices and that sort of thing?
Sure. So, the newer Chromebooks, Chromebooks we bought in the previous years have had a five-year license with Google, which means they hit five years, Google stops doing updates, and eventually they're not able to be used for online testing. The newer Chromebooks now have eight years, so that is their expected life. That seems like a lot for me for a device like that to last eight years, but that's along the licensing of work. So we do have bond money budgeted over the period of the next eight to 10 years to replace devices as we need, you know, start a good rotation so that all of our devices can still be able to test, and that we'll always have devices backed up for future students.
So can you walk us through that rotation a little bit? If most middle schoolers and high schools got one last year, does that mean that most of the machines will... And they keep the same machine their entire time, right? If we don't rotate each school year? So we're going to have most of them when they hit the end of high school?
It is our plan for at least the high school students to keep their device their entire time through. Maybe at the end of the four years, we kind of reevaluate that and see, you know, are these machines going to last where we can stretch that out for the ones that the middle school students receive to get them through their high school years as well? It's just going to be a time will tell kind of thing is to see how well they hold up, but we do have funds and planning available to rotate those out if we need to.
Thank you.
I think it's really important to note that, Joe, with our consultants from communication by designing and in all of our technology-related bond projects, we're really very calculated in that so that not every device expires at the same time, right? You all have seen our replacement schedule for our buses. It's essentially the same kind of thing. We can't be in a situation where all of our technology needs to be replaced at once. We have to be more calculated, and so they were really very intentional with that. We have a great team from CBD that works with us, and they're really on top of it, so that's helped us a lot. But Joe spent a lot of time with them to make sure we were...
We were very fortunate to have CBD who had been through this process with other schools multiple times, so they knew the ins and outs, they knew where you might get caught. So, yeah, to help us lay out the design for the time period, they were a great asset for us. Thank you.
Joe, next on my report is an update on our MICA plan, and so I think Stephanie Miners here, Director of State and Bureau of Programs, should talk to us about that.
Good evening. So this year, when we look at our school improvement plan, it may look a little bit... Our goals may look a little bit different to you than what you've seen in the past. Last year, the MDE released out the option to do systems schools, where historically you may have seen a goal that aligned to every subject area, a math goal, a reading goal, so on and so forth. But the MDE, through their MI KIP or the Michigan Integrated Continuous Improvement Process, allowed us to do a system goal so that you really could unify the goals and make sure that everybody could see themselves in the goals and their work in each building. So when they released this option, our school improvement plan really thought it was great for us, as we've really been working hard on our multi-tiered system of support. So we have two goals that center around the multi-tiered systems of support, our academic one and then also our whole child one. And so the multi-tiered system of support really is just a system to make sure that all students are getting what they need to learn. So historically, or generally speaking, about 80% of students typically with that tier one level are going to be okay, getting what they need to be proficient. If you go into tier two, typically about 15% of students might need that, and tier three is around 5%. So as you look at our goals, you can kind of see what we're doing at each level to make sure we're meeting the needs of those students. So our MTSS academic goal says that we'll implement an integrated MTSS framework with fidelity across all schools with the district infrastructures necessary to support that framework resulting in increased reading and math achievement. So that's our overarching goal. On there, you can also see, last year, we reestablished our MTSS steering committee. This committee was combined of many different stakeholders across the district. There was someone from every building, different teachers, different administrators from every single building, and this was part of the work that we already were starting to do is just making sure that our system is cohesive and it's consistent across grade levels, across the district, and comprehensive. So last year, we set our definitions for what tier one, two, and three look like on the academic level. I would believe that this year we may get there as well for the whole child support, but this is our definition there. As you go down, we have to list what our strategies are for each portion. So at the tier one level, for academic, that starts with highly qualified teachers, a guaranteed viable curriculum. That goes hand in hand with our professional studies committees, making those curriculum recommendations, providing content-specific professional development for our teachers. This year, we added an additional instructional coach, so we're up to three instructional coaches in the district, and then those parent and family engagement activities at each level. From there, additional support can be found at tier two for that seen through our at-risk and our title-one teachers and support staff, our reading and math core interventionists, our ESL interventions, and our extended learning opportunities, and after-school tutoring, oiler hour, credit recovery, and peak summer school. From there, additional support needed that looks like individualized interventions or skills blocks or sometimes special education. As we move over into our MTSS whole child goal, this says that we will implement an integrated MTSS framework with fidelity across all schools with the district infrastructure necessary to support that framework resulting in improved student attendance and decreased behavioral referrals. I think you guys have seen a lot of this work coming through in our building reports as we work so hard on those attendance and behavior. So at the tier one level, this looks like our social-emotional curriculum. Second step, we've got lots of... We've had lots of great professional development on this between our Project Aware Trauma Informed PD, that happened today as well, our Capturing Kids' Hearts, our Restorative Practices, all the work with Jim Harris that we've been doing. In this spring, we did our early warning intervention and monitoring systems at Oasis. This also can be seen in our QBIS systems. We provide counselors and Project Aware counselors at that tier one level. We have a youth service unit, and then all those extracurricular sports clubs and activities and at-risk agreements. Moving into the tier two, we have behavior interventions. Our counselors provide tier-two supports for students needing it, and we also have MTSS teams and studies around students when they need more support. At the tier-three level, that looks like special education sometimes, individualized interventions, and also homeless liaison, meeting all of those social-emotional type needs for students. So those really, as you can see, encompass a lot of what we're doing here, and so happy that this is an option for us to be able to have a systems goal to really encompass all that. We also had a goal film that came about in the 21-22 school year, and this was determined each year, every building completes a school systems review, and that helps us look at processes within the schools, and there's different indicators. And so we developed a goal called Increase in Guidance and Support for Teaching and Learning, and this really speaks to us being able to support our teachers. And so the things that we need to provide is a guaranteed and viable curriculum, database decision-making, and collective responsibility. And you can see that through many of the things that I've already talked about, our professional development that we're providing them, our professional studies committees, our PLCs, our instructional coaches. So just making sure that we're providing the support for our teachers so that they feel supported and have the structure needed so that they can be there for their students as well. The last thing that I put together here is just a crosswalk document of our strategic plan, and so they both are so encompassing of everything we do. As you know, in our strategic plan, we have our academic programs, ensuring all students will have the skills to be productive and successful in reaching their goals. You can see through those three goals that we're really trying to hit those needs between our academic, our whole child, and increasing that guidance and support for teachers. As well as our next strategic plan area was expanding services that support the well-being of students and staff. Again, you can see those in our whole child goal and our increasing the support and guidance for teachers. Our personnel and leadership developing and implementing programs and services to support all staff, that's really seen in that goal around supporting teachers. The next part of our strategic plan is incorporating plans and procedures to ensure a safe and secure operational environment for all students. Again, really encompassing that whole child goal and that goal for teachers of providing guidance and support. And then the last part is communication and community engagement, diversifying communications with all students, and again, you can see pieces of that coming through in our whole child goal. So just kind of want to provide for you how those all interfit. As we continue with our MTSS steering committee, I think that will really be a great teamwork team that can help facilitate all of our school improvement initiatives as well moving forward. Are there any questions? That's pretty good.
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Go ahead, Tim.
So the intent of this is like our annual structure that we have to support, provide to the state, correct? Is this a new way of looking at it and aligning to what we're doing? Same thing, right?
Yes, yes. So we have to have a school improvement plan through the state. They just released it in a way we can either... You can stay with your content-specific goals, or you can go to a systems goal, and we've really been focusing on our MTSS system, and so we thought it was a great time to make that.
See how the linkages work, it's very interesting. It's the first time I'm like, what? Because I was totally expecting something different when I opened it. Oh, okay. But I can see how it works, I can see how this could be very helpful, how we are organized and what we're doing. And thank you for the graphic. The graphic makes it even more. So thank you.
Oh, there we go. Okay. Well, we watch for the report. I'm like a big fan of systems change and a systems view of how everything fits together or sometimes doesn't, so I'm appreciative of that. My question was in the whole child part. The goal there is improve student attendance and then decrease behavior referrals. Can you make the connection for me between some of the strategies that you have listed there in attendance as far as like parent connection is concerned? Because we know that attendance isn't always the fault of the students, like you do all the things and the clubs and things to get them there, to keep them interested, but what is the connection with home and parents and making sure that their students are at school?
So I think it's on us to make that relationship with families and students, and especially for that improved student attendance. I think we absolutely know that sometimes that's not the fault of the child, you know? But when we move into the upper ages, sometimes, you know, we can do more there to make sure that they are feeling welcome and supported and that we're meeting all of those, you know, baseline needs for them and helping support them at school as well. So I think in some of those, you know, counseling, homeless liaisons, all of those, so we can support some of those baseline needs, hopefully, we will see decreased behavior. We will see improved attendance because they know that we can be a safe space.
Thank you. And then I just wanted to note that I really liked hearing about teacher support, student safety and support, as well as the community connection that you've identified in your plans, so thank you for that.
I agree that having a system model allows us to see that, right? Before, while we had the community and the safety and all these bits in our strategic plan, it wasn't coming through in the format that we're using, and so I think it gives a much bigger picture of our district, so that's wonderful. And I know we have the data for all this stuff, and so what I'm hoping is maybe next year that we can see what we had when we started the system model, and what is our attendance, our behavior referrals to site first to go, and then see where we're at as a whole system for all of these, you know, categories so that we can kind of see where our strengths are and our weaknesses.
Absolutely. One of the things what I'm actually doing later this week is that the MDE has a rubric of MTSS and how you can score yourself on that rubric. So that would be another indicator for us. We're going to get a baseline this week of where do we fall on their rubric, and so it'd be another great way for us to show you are we making gains on that as well.
Whenever you're ready, I mean, yeah, so that'd be great for us to see and identify those areas whenever.
Absolutely, yeah.
This whole process is interesting because our buildings really worked hard on creating that data story, so they're already looking at that, and I think you've seen some of that through like the high school, the middle school presentation, and certainly last month when Fancher and McGuire were here talking about their exclusion of data and improvements there. So they're definitely dialed in on gathering that data. The next one will just be having that year-to-year comparison, which will be really interesting to see.
I also like, I feel like this is a much easier format to share without cover than what we had, which was daunting and a number that we're hard to read into, and so as we build this up for that year-to-year comparison, that would be a really nice piece to share.
Thank you, Stephanie. Excuse me. Next on my report is a series of policies. As you all know, we've spent a great bit of time on our policies lately, and we're about to spend some more. So in the month of July and August, for those of you that don't know, we went through all of our board policies, and we did make a shift from our policy provider, from Neola to Trine, and at that time, we decided that we wanted to do them in a bulk, but then come back here and really spend some time looking individually at different policies. So this evening, on our agenda, to start is to look at policy sections, just for sake of, I'm going to say the 1100s, which are really sort of the establishment policies, right? Those are policies looking at general overview, our mission statements, and baseline definitions. We need to look at our school wellness policy tonight, and that is different than the other policies because we do actually have a change in that policy from when we adopted it just last month. So that we need to sort of set aside and do that separately. And then the next section of policy review, I thought that we could talk about is the 5100, which looks at student rights. So again, I think this will be a lengthy process. We have a proposed calendar that will take us really through the bulk of the school year. I don't think that we have to have a ton of conversations about every policy, but I think what this does is allows us to be really intentional and actually focus on a policy and actually read it because I think probably we all spent some time skimming them this summer, but aside from Melissa, maybe. We probably didn't read every word of all of them this summer, so we'll take the year and do that. So I don't know, I mean, if you want to talk about your idea for the process?
Absolutely. We wanted to make sure that while we gave this process the time and the commitment that we didn't get, you know, kind of buried in it, and I think after a certain amount of minutes looking at policy at a given night, that we're going to max out. And so we thought that we could try to keep it within an hour-ish, I can, you know, give or take, right? We can keep an eye on the clock, and if we have a section, you know, like for tonight, we have 1100s, we have the student rights, and if that takes us too long, we can always table who's going to the following meeting, and so I'll try and keep an eye on the clock and conscious of our time. The other thing we wanted to do is, again, you know, we realized that there's a lot of policies and that maybe we don't... Often, there's going to be a certain set that we are most likely, you know, good with the way they're wording, and that is going to be each night, a section of them that we're going to want to talk more about. And to facilitate this process, we put together a table, so every night that we have policy change, we have that table that we can all see, that's shared, each policy is aligned, and if we're okay with the current wording, we initial the policy so that we know when we start our meeting, where we're at. If none of the policies are initial, we either know that we had a very busy week and didn't have enough time to go in, but that also informs our decision of how long we've been there, or that we have policies that as a whole, we feel we need to be reviewed a little bit more than that. While the other hand, if there's a policy that has four of our initials or more, we know that the majority of it is good as is. We felt strongly that we wanted voices to be heard in that process, and that process of putting initials, make sure of that, that, you know, if we have issues, that we know that, you know, we can all go into this. We're happy to tweak this if it doesn't quite fit with how you saw the process go, and so maybe I can open it up to everyone and see if that works with you before we get going, otherwise we can get rid of it.
I think this is a great process. I like...
I like the accountability. And also it kind of gives us a sense of how they want to use that policy that we want to, that we know in advance are going to take some of our decisions.
I have to agree. I think it's a nice technique to help us through a lot of information because we can spend. And now that, but it's also difficult because so much of this is law that we, there's only so much sometimes we can change. And so it helps us manage that, that rule side. I like the process. The one question I have is I was able to do it in the link, but where are we storing it in the system? So we can see that running list.
That, that is in the board drive. So if you go into the board drive, not in any individual folder. So we have our meetings in the folders. Did you not find it in the board drive, Tim?
I took it from your link that you sent.
Okay.
But like right now, I'm trying to find it.
If you just follow that link, you'll see everybody's contributions.
I saw all of that, but I'm, right now I don't have the link in front of me. I didn't know what folder it was in. So I was going to go into folders that I ran into it, but I know it's out there. I just don't know how to.
I will make sure that it's there.
For the share drive?
Yeah. I thought the technique and the link were great and I was able to go in and it was perfectly fine. I just right now I don't know where it's at.
I'd like to thank Jennifer, Weene and Ethan for coming up with this plan. I appreciate it.
And Amy was a very, very conversative one, too. Yeah.
Just for clarification on this section, what's his proposed changes? Is that something Jennifer's going to be putting in, like the review A B's or what? You need to take, or what is that process?
It, it was sort of what I thought of that column. And I can name it something different if it made better sense. But I, I sort of thought I would take notes from our conversations and then try to put something there to document that those are our suggestions for changes and those have been sent on to TruN. Because I do think that's an important part of this process that if we are agreeing that we'd like to have some adjustment to language, I really feel like I need to send it to our policy contact at TruN, make sure they're okay with it, and then we would go on that at the next meeting. So I sort of was thinking that column will also keep me on this, like, yes, I've sent this one on, no, I have, that kind of thing. So, um, but we could, we could do something different. But that was kind of my idea that we would keep record of what we've talked about or what we want to change in that column.
That sounds like important.
No, I would, I would do it through our conversations, yeah.
I appreciate that clarification because I thought that was where we were put, what we thought the modification should be or the suggestion should be. So how do we communicate that if we feel like something is?
Well, I, I think those conversations have to happen here. So I mean, I think that we could, we could add, I could do another column that would, that would allow you to put notes in. But I think for, for folks to understand your, any of our intent, I think it has to be discussed. It can't just be an electronic exchange, if that makes sense.
So we can just take notes outside of the things we want to bring up, but not put it in that.
And if I look at that, perhaps what I could, what I could change that title to, I could say, um, you know, something like suggestions for improvement and then have, you know, changes submitted to TruN. Something like that, so that we have also that folks could put in their suggestions for improvement and then we could do.
Yeah, and that's actually how we used it today.
Right, right.
Shifted already. And so.
I think you can do that.
I think having just at the end column and then, well, knowing that we don't have to put our suggestion changes in there, that the goal is just for us to discuss this openly, publicly with everyone so that we can kind of see if I agree or intend of the changes before they get to the entry to TruN. But I mean, even today for me, that table was very useful to see that there was a few policies that stood out that were obviously we wanted to all talk about tonight and that the majority was fine. And so that was a useful tool to see.
So I don't know if you all have the table pull up. I got your back.
So as everyone knows, she's doing a live. Just sort of working out the main folder and put that in there in the board drive so it's easy to find.
Okay, so Gavin just got me a folder in the board drive, so. Is that, is that look?
Yeah, that cleared that sort of.
Yeah.
You agree?
Yeah. I interpret that, that had gone to TruN already.
Oh, okay, yes. No, I apologize. It's just.
It's fine.
We're starting.
We're starting.
Yeah. Figuring things out.
Okay.
Ready, I will make this up.
So the, um, the first few policies, I guess we can just kind of go through them topic wise. And if anyone feels as though there's a point of conversation or something that they want to review or discuss, we can do that. And if not, we can just move on to the next one and sort of again, you know, the first group is those are the establishment policies. So we've got first the general policy statement that just kind of sets the parameters for our policies. The next statement is our mission, vision and belief statement. And as someone noted, I think maybe it was Jessica even, that, you know, where our plan is that we will be working on our mission, vision and beliefs beginning this winter. We established these back in 2019. It was meant to be a five-year plan inspiring in 2024. So we will be engaging with each other and with our community after the first of the year, just to review that process. Policy 13001 is the creation amendment of hosting of policies. And that really just walks through our policy, our, our procedure to establish a policy. So the second paragraph down does talk about us being able to approve a policy after a single reading. Our best practice with our formal policies was that we read them twice. And, and I think that can be up to us. Certainly we can do more than that, especially if we feel like it's a policy that we need additional information or clarification on, we could always, you know, review it more than once. What was nice about the two times is that it gave us the option to gather additional information if board members have questions and the administrators have the answers.
I agree with that process, the double reading.
Okay.
I think over the years it's been very helpful for board members to better understand the community they don't understand. I, I don't know if that should be clarified to be.
So is this statement, it says, "The board may, in this discretion, review policies at multiple meetings before taking action." So in my mind, that kind of gave us the clause of it's been our practice that we review them twice. Of course, tonight I'm probably going to ask teacher proof 5707 after reading it once so that ginger can get, well, and I, we'll talk about that in a minute, but, but, so just an, an exception maybe. So I don't know if that sentence is enough, Tim, or do you think there should be something that's more clear?
Now I'm looking at the second paragraph.
Yeah.
We should clarify that with two instead of one.
But then that, yes, so that's what it is that said today when we. So it gives us a little bit of that flexibility.
But it has the "may" in there. I'm starting thinking long term. I think that process historically, we've learned that is a good process. So helping future boards understand where if I were a board member, I would say, well, after one, we do it.
So the sentence that I read is the third sentence in that era.
Right.
I'm sorry, the second sentence, but so. So you would like to change after two readings?
It says, "Unless the law requires," so, um, "the board may adopt or then any policy after two readings at a regular special board meeting instead of a single reading."
Okay.
So here's, here's kind of my, my philosophy here. I think in general, policy needs to be high level. Sometimes saying really specific is not the best sort of policy because it really blocks you down too much. However, this kind of the thing, I still operate all these years of experience, the value of reading policies twice for our community is really quite significant that to try to change, push that or to share that knowledge downstream because of value. So that's why I'm saying, so.
I tend to agree with him on this. I think you're making a lot of sense, especially in terms of institutional longevity. So I appreciate that.
So if everyone else is good at, I can follow up with our TruN contact, which my guess is this won't be it probably because we're doing more than the minimum. So I, and we can make that change and then we could put that on the agenda to be approved at our next board meeting.
Or to be read at our next meeting.
To be read and potentially approved at our next board meeting.
So that, and that your last one means that we could even have more if we needed to.
Correct, correct.
Kind of setting that minimum is kind of what I'm thinking.
Okay. And then, um, policy 1401 are the basic definitions. And it's important to know that these definitions are established in this policy, but then they are used throughout all of our policies. So it helps kind of set that, that ground, that, that baseline there.
I think it's very refreshing.
So the next section then that we'll go to with our policies is that 5707, school wellness policy. And the, the policy really looks at our commitment to nutrition promotion, to physical activity goals, standard nutrition guidelines, food and beverage marketing, a wellness committee. So these are all things that have been in place for quite some time. The section that is new, but is different than what we looked at this summer is under section I. And if you remember, we've talked about this at our August board meetings. We have the great opportunity this year to provide all students with free lunch and free breakfast, but there's certain things that we have to do in order to be eligible for that. So, Jen, Jennifer, if you want to talk about the, the, the only good debt, bad debt that we have?
Sure. As we mentioned several times this summer, very exciting law has passed that we're allowed to offer our students free breakfast and free lunch for the whole school year. With that, one of the rules that we have to follow in order to make that happen is to write off all bad debt on our outstanding forfeiture accounts. After we used as many grants as we had access to, we had just over $30,000 that we still had to write out to our general fund. There are also now new grants available to help reimburse us for that. One of the steps in order to apply for that grant, to receive that 30,000 dollar reimbursement is to prove that we have a board policy that says we will not lunch shaming. We do not use special meals. We do not pay any different attention to any student other than their free use of the pay. So that's what that new section I too is regarding lunch shaming, that we do not allow that whatsoever. And that's part of what we have to add in order to collect those grants to get reimbursed at $30,000.
So the clarification?
So the great thing and just to show for all of us, I think it was really reassuring that we made the right decision to go to TruN. We talked about, we said, oh, you know, we've got to have this in our board policies. And Kevin emailed our policy contact and literally within like minutes, he responded and said, here's the update that includes everything that we have to have so we can have free lunch. So I know we weren't the only district asking, but it was really nice to have that, that kind of response, so.
Can I ask a similar question?
Of course.
So looking at the bottom of that, as they adopted, they revised. So we've adopted this and this is a proposal for a revise, which is just I. So in this process, how are we going to track revisions and approval of that component as compared to what it was prior?
We, we've never tracked that before. So our little policies would say, you know, original adoption date, 2002, policy revision, 2017, 2019. You know, so it would list the multiple dates of revision, but I've never tracked that. So when you saw the policies, what you saw were, were items that were underlined in red or there was like a hash mark next to it, if it was in these parts of the policy. But once we adopted those changes and they went onto our website, it all looked the same. So you don't get to tell it. So if that's something that you would like us to do, I can try. I mean, Kevin's real good.
Just to clarify, how would the public sees it like? So they wouldn't know that we added I, which doesn't make a difference because the current policy is, this is the current policy.
Right. So if, if this policy is approved this evening, when you go to our website tomorrow, it would say date adopted 8/22/23, date revised 9/18/23. And then if there were additional revisions after that, we would add the additional date, not taking away today's date because we'll keep all the revisions, but it's just one policy that doesn't show what you're changing.
Makes sense. I did have a question for this one. Sorry.
I do have a question about the lunch shaming part 2C. Is this coming directly from, who have adopted this policy in other districts? Is this mandated language? I'm just curious about communicating directly with a student about unpaid mail charges unless the district cannot communicate with the, the grownups. So that's kind of.
Yeah, these are, these are actually all specific bullet points that were required in a grant for us to cover each one of these points in our board policy to, to apply for the grant.
To clarify, the grant is coming from whom?
I believe USDA because it's a, it's a national, not a, she.
It's a federal grant, federal agency. Yes. It's not Bob and Jean Foundation.
Ginger, can you walk through how, well, our student debt will be gone, right? After, I mean.
Yes. So technically it is gone. I had to write about before they would approve our, our application for this year. But right now it's being charged to general fund. So once this is adopted as the last case, I need to pull up all of the information that they request to apply for the grants together and I can apply for the grant. Once we get reimbursed, then I would just move that, that $31,000 out of spending there on the general fund and into the grant so the revenue recovery is not significant and we can go home on our loans.
So moving into the future, if that happens to not be the case anymore, there is an opportunity or a methodist on, about contacting students directly if they can't get ahold of parents?
So and right now, our primary way of contacting families or students, so if they have unpaid debt is via mail, right? Like US Postal Service mail. So that is being sent out to you.
This lunch shaming is all public shaming.
It's public intimidation.
Did you have a question?
I have a question, but not about that session. I wondered if we had a wellness committee? So if we go back to the G Wellness Committee, the district's formal wellness committee, I wonder if they had one?
We do. Do you want to talk about wellness committee?
About what wellness committee? Oh, yeah. So we recently, we, we were kind of fully operating prior to COVID, as lots of things are with our wellness committee. We made at least at minimum once a month. And originally our focus was very much, you probably remember the chocolate milk wars. We were really trying to pull back any amount of sugar in our breakfast because if a student has maybe lucky turn of cereal and a chocolate milk, we were kind of alarmed with the, the way they were spending their day. So that was kind of one of our focus points is really working on those healthy meals. That played a little bit of a factor in SFE because they definitely promoted the fact that they would make things a little bit more on scratch and with healthier ingredients. I think you've maybe seen that Kristen from SFE has reached out with a party table built. And then in addition to that, back then, we had someone in my office who had made walking backs in the buildings. And we encouraged staff to participate with their students with everything from Go Google to a squat challenge. Send us pictures of, of that activity for staff to get moving and for students to get moving. And that is required as connected to our, some of that whole food services. So we just recently posted more kind of an extra duty role for someone who's energetic and positive and help us get, kind of get back on track in all of those areas. We hope to re, re-up our share tables at the elementarys. SFE has purchased nice share tables so that if a student doesn't like their apple, for example, they can put it in a certain place and it's called a two-way share table so someone else can take that. It can't really go back in the lunch line on their salad or whatever. So lots of things in progress and we haven't worked to review our ethics and justice acquisition, but hopefully get that started very soon. Helping moms for staff and students. Helping roles for staff and students.
Appreciate that. Those efforts are happening. What is the composition of that committee? Is it our members or?
Traditionally, we've had like a secondary administrator, an elementary media K2 and a 35. We've had Sabrina McNeese join our committee. She is from the Michigan State Extension Office. She's been very helpful. She will go into all the classrooms. I think she originally focused on Poland, but I believe she's been also presenting again and talking to students about health, nutrition, and who else is on the committee. Usually Kristen Locken is of course our director and myself, our class teacher. So we have a mixture.
Would there be an opportunity for someone, multiple people from their community to engage in that space if this were one?
Yeah. I mean, Sabrina represents kind of that a parallel to Laura's, her profession that were, or like really she was helping us with our anti-sugar mission. But which it was really kind of a big learning for all of us to kind of figure out whether sugar or the things were getting in our breakfast. So we're trying to make sure that they have two hot meals every morning at minimum and some things like that.
Thank you.
Another question is about 5707. So we will, under any business, ask you to approve that policy this evening. And then we'll jump to the 5000s. I just got a little bit out of my drive when I was moving that. So Policy 5101 is student expression. Yeah, of course, please.
Okay, so the very opening of this, when I read it, I wasn't sure how to articulate kind of how it was landing for me. So I'll just kind of read out loud and I think I kind of figured out how or why it landed the way it does with me. The district will balance student speech and expression rights with its responsibility to provide a safe, orderly learning environment. And my response to that is student speech and expression isn't always contradictory to safety and orderly learning and that sometimes it's supportive. So I think that's kind of why it's landing for me as if it is always kind of disorderly and interrupts learning. So I don't know if there's a way, I don't have a solution off the top of my head to kind of articulate that in this policy, but I think it's important to encourage student speech and their expression.
Could we use the word encourage? And could we say the district will encourage student speech and balance?
Student speech and expression while also upholding its responsibility to provide a safe, orderly learning environment. Some things of that, that could be fair.
I felt the same way.
So the district will encourage.
Yeah, the district will encourage student speech and expression. While also maintaining its responsibility to provide a safe, orderly environment.
So a little background, so this is how they have to litigate it. There's a lot of case law on Supreme Court law and everything that you're reading there is taken personally, very explicit cases. And that's why it's that way. So all of the law actually structures on free speech unless. So I think adding your clarification at the beginning helps to set the tone better, but it keeps the key component that is literally very unlitigated. There's a lot of law on this with the rest of it, which is that safety, orderly learning environment. So almost every single case I've ever read from Supreme Court down, that's exactly what they look at is that safety and orderly. Want you to speak, but.
So if that, if that works, then we'll, I'll just read it again just so that we can all do that. The district will encourage student, I'm sorry, the district encourages student speech and expression while also maintaining its responsibility to provide a safe, orderly learning environment. Does that sound good?
Okay.
Are there other sections of this policy that anyone had comments or suggestions on?
You know what I like is with that first sentence, it's kind of says the names to give the rest, which is also where I was getting stuff. And I understand the rest, but paragraph 213, and for those of you that can't see them are, you know, the things you may or may not engage in. You know, I was checking out other districts. I mean, that seems to be pretty dictated by all. And there's not a lot to say, but having that, it's interesting, my, when I was reading other districts to see what they were doing, going cold, the difference in introductory sentence was making to my reading. It could be the exact same wording, but if you introduce it differently, it completely changes what comes after. And so I think that's why, especially on these, that putting particular attention at the beginning does really help us. And so I'm okay with the change as well.
Yeah, I mean, there are sentences that I personally, I've been understanding the case law behind them or the existence of case law behind that does help me understand why that language is there. And if that's not a language, then you're probably not going to be able to change it. But I get that. And that's why we are, that experts help us with these policies together. So I really appreciate you changing that sentence.
Especially have to ask, our staffs have to work in the environment of technologies are constantly coming in and there's new ways of communicating, whether it's considered within the building or outside of the building, which are just gray zones. I think the policy still works well. We would like students to know how to engage and express themselves. It's important to us. And many things that we do have to have in other areas, we say that that is, we want them to be, but there's always a lot.
We're good to, keep moving? Okay. The next policy is 5103, search and seizure.
And I should have offered first, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. I, you know what, there were initials on lockers here. I mean, yeah, so 5102 is lockers. Does anybody have any questions about the locker policy? I did just want to say how we have a large student group in our audiences. And all of these policies are available for your review on our website. So when you look at our agendas in the future, you can match up. I know it's probably hard to read. You can match up the policies that we're reviewing and pull them right from our website. So just so you all know. So 5102 lockers, are there any questions about that policy? And then we'll move to 5103, which is search and seizure.
The, this is one where I was hoping we could add and indicate when, so this is about searching. And I found language that others were using and so I can read this sentence. So I was suggesting we add, search of a student's person or intimate personal belongings shall be conducted by a person of the student's gender in the presence of another staff member of the same gender. And so just kind of putting some caution around the search part.
Emily, did you have a thought as to where in the policy?
Uh, yes. And so, hold on, I need to go back up. On the first paragraph, and so at the end of the first paragraph, it would be after, in rare cases, school officials to conduct a search without reasonable suspicion if there isn't even a threat of physical harm or death. And so that would be what the search, quantifying the gender of the person searching.
So the board members have thoughts on that adjustment?
So just for clarification, you're seeing women who do same gender adults. There's a search. And you're seeing the student also needs to be there. Cause I'm not sure if I read it correctly, but like what's saying in rare cases, school officials make it up to search without reasonable suspicion if there's a imminent threat of physical harm or death. So just where my brain is going is we're in a very, if this is a very dangerous situation, we can't find to, you know what I'm saying? Like the safety issue is surfing back. I just wouldn't want to lock ourselves in. But I, like I hear what you're saying about, or if the student, let's say they're not at school. Yeah, I'm just, I know we can't go through every scenario, but.
My clarification also, so is your view from personal search? So if it's a girl's locker, you need to have two women search the girl's locker?
No, I think it's personal search.
So as in a body search, so.
Back to asking.
As I was asking.
So I'm the person.
I'm that person.
So and how about a new service? So that we're sure that if there is a search of a student's person, then it would require a new service student to be. I agree with the two people. I think for protection of our own staff, I think that is a really good thing to do. So my clarification is the gender cloud that forms when you say gender because they, we let them choose gender and so there has to be a process there to delay, which is all right. Sometimes delaying these things is a valid thing in many ways. But the question would be, who would be the best people to lead the search? And so it would be, the gender goes to the comfort of the searchee. So would a professional, a new services unit, who's a police officer, would that be a better company or a better structure? And since we do have new services and they're very readily available, saying if there's a personal search, that a new services unit person should join.
So I just, I just want to interject that I don't know that our standards for search are different than that of law enforcement. So I don't know that, that our searches would always meet the level that law enforcement has to meet. So they may not be able to always participate. Because, and I don't pretend to understand all the nuances, but we're talking about reasonable suspicion as compared to probable cause. And my understanding is that their standard is more of the probable cause where ours is reasonable suspicion. So typically I don't think law enforcement participates.
I was going to say, I think it opens up, I think, school officials in that law enforcement, which case that it's like possibly criminal right here suspicion by school officials. So people that really miss the policy is unreasonable where it's a legal matter and it's an emergency. So maybe the placement of what you're thinking is before in rare cases.
Yeah, I think that, you're right. Yeah.
And I think it's a good idea. I just don't.
I know, I mean, that's probably all together.
Why not report it? Call it school.
So. So are we saying that this sentence would be added in front of the last sentence of that paragraph?
Right.
So it would be in rare cases, two school officials.
No, that would be before. So we add the sentence and then after the added new sentence, we will go in rare cases, a school official.
And that could be whoever it's that serious, whether it's like death or, you know, physical harm, then it's whoever is there in a dangerous situation. That's all I understand.
Which is good because I do know in the past we had pocket searches, right? It's not dependent on pockets, coat, or hands, right? And the mechanisms of the guideline was to have two people there and pass. But I don't know if we ever had gender specific.
Is that something we can get, like the legal advice, the professional?
Yeah, having access to eyes on this might be good.
I mean, again, our tracks here are building a system that our staff can feel comfortable with protecting them as much as the students.
Absolutely. And maybe, I agree with the two people, it's always good for everyone at all, but I'd be curious to, just what Tru said, if one of the same gender, not this two. I mean, again, just if you put it, not just.
Absolutely.
Anything else on this particular policy? Uh, 5104 is age of majority. 5105 is collaboration with outside entities. And 5106 is the policy on transgender students.
I just have some clarification on this one. There's a lot here as we talked about the school owner. I was thinking through example and maybe it applies, maybe it doesn't, but just the simple thing of I call my kids by their own name, not intending to. You know, I call them my dogs, you know, that kind of thing by accident. And so thinking from a teacher perspective is probably, you know, if there's a student that's going by a different name or that's been a recent change. You know, and maybe this happens building by building or not sure if we have this umbrella policy, but just, you know, is a teacher going to get written up for that, you know, again?
So I feel like the policy does a really good job explaining that. So maybe it's for a read because there's a lot of sentences, but maybe I can read it out loud. I like the language choice. It says the district will ensure that all staff engage in reasonable and good faith efforts. To me, that's the second section, in reasonable and good faith efforts to address the student by the student's preferred name and preferred gender pronouns. So that it gives us a flexibility if mistakes are made, you know, if we're issuing good intent, which I think is important. So to me, that's how that's addressed.
And what was actually that in terms?
Yeah, it's in page, oh, I can't, let's hold on. It's, I don't know, I lost some of the numbering. It's under initial notification. And it's paragraph, so C123, the last sentence of the second paragraph. And it's elsewhere as well. This is the first time it shows up, but that reasonable and good faith effort shows up as well after initial notification. And I can't remember where right now. I can probably check.
And I guess, Jennifer, maybe you can speak to this too. Like if, and again, I don't want to get caught in the weeds, but if a student is going with a different name and we switch back and then we switch back again, what is the procedure, you know, again, to provide support that the people are well informed, including the parents and teachers and what is that?
So typically a student in this kind of situation would work with one of our counselors to develop their gender support plan. And so that's an ongoing relationship that the students have with our support personnel, counselor, social worker, whoever that might be. So we want to make sure that students, that, you know, we're being respectful of student wishes, but we're also being reasonable about what's happening. So I think that that's all about building that relationship so that the students know who they can go to, who they can trust, and then developing that plan together so that it's thoughtful and that it's intentional and that it's not something that would change today, change tomorrow kind of thing. So really that that supplement is a detailed document that students and their counselors work through and revisit on a regular basis.
I would just like to add that I feel that reasonable and good faith kind of covers this situation too. It's actually words again, I found it again, the second side is actually.
Right, with that gender confusion.
Sorry. Rare instance in which a student is changing their name over and over again. There's a point at which a counselor might say, okay, your expectations might be this. Like everybody's doing our best, we're all trying, but this is what we. I know that my own kid for a while wanted me to say to my aunt I don't know what kind of shoes he was wearing that day. And I pointed out that that's, I can't do that. It's not reasonable. They need to be. So.
I also want to comment that that sounds more like a procedure to me, not necessarily a policy. So this is like the umbrella. So this is like the umbrella. How we implement that would be really at the staff level, just out of our.
And would that be for building? Or, because it leaves different books. Like, I'm just trying to get those.
So the gender support plan would be the same regardless of the building. I think that the student, obviously, would work with that building administrator, that counselor, that student support team that's in that building. But the plan itself would be the same. The key elements of the plan could be different depending on the age of the student and where the student is in their journey. But the document itself is a document that's been provided to us through OCR. So it's the same document as in standard, but used for everyone, regardless of the building.
You know, as much as OCRs.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Office of Civil Rights.
Thank you.
Yeah, they have a whole guidebook, whole guiding document for schools that we've been able to follow. And it's been very helpful for our counselors, our administrators, our teachers, very helpful. Yeah, sorry.
Listen to your statement about policy and procedure. I think they did a good job. The section we're talking about is just above section D, not the next paragraph above, but there's two lines above that. This kind of over, getting abroad of what the plan is. There's a process, you need to have a process for a plan more than it's the help descriptive of that, what that administration sidelined the implementation of the policy, which again, was outside. You don't want to be too explicit in that process. But the Office of Civil Rights helps because they give frameworks for school districts to choose from. So we don't prefer here to, you must use the OCR plan. So it means it's a tool that we're using.
For having moved in a number of districts in there, fifty-one was the expansion. I felt that ours was particularly clear, very well-defined. And I was actually, you know, I was gonna say, they really did a great job writing this. I haven't found a lot highlights more than ours.
And I mean, when I was doing my own research, and I shared this with Jennifer, I mean, the OCMOS has adopted this policy. And they have a great back page for their community on the school district's website, explaining what this policy does and does not do, and explaining how this policy really just, in their case, and I think it's true here too, ratifies what we're already to a large extent and makes it clearer for everybody involved. So in terms of, from a staff perspective or a teacher perspective, I feel like this adds clarity that we did not have before. I feel like it's more clarifying than obfuscating.
If you don't want it, I can send the link to the OCMOS schools FAQ document. It's just a section on their website. And what that might help us do is that could help us identify areas that could be potential family ask questions that we think we might encounter in our schools. And then we can work with Truun to develop our own version of the FAQ. We could certainly borrow some of their questions and answers if we felt like that pledges. But I agree that that's a really nice, helpful piece to give to families as well.
I think if your questions, parents are going to know their level of involvement. And so whether that, I haven't looked at that link yet. But you know, if that spells it out.
It does.
You know, I think that would, because we've had lots of conversation, you know, come up above some of this. So I think just some of that clarification could help on, you know, if we're trying to check about how this affects all people involved.
Sure. And I think that's a big part of the gender support plan is the piece of the gender communication plan. So how is this communicated? Who is it communicated to? When? How does the school play a supporting role? And those key communications, and that's all very important for our public.
Other questions about fifty-one oh six?
And we can certainly come back, you know, to any of these as we go. So that does make it through our list of policies for this evening.
Wow.
There we go. Good task, yes. Two quick things I just want to comment on as I write for my report. First, just two pieces that I distributed to board members. Everyone received this brochure that is from the Mid-Michigan Aquatic Recreation Center. It talks more about their progress with the aquatic center in our community. And I know our board's been heavily invested in that with looking at the letter of intent to lease or sell our property to the aquatic centers. I wanted to share this with you. You all should have received an invitation to information sessions that they have in the community coming up here in the next few weeks. I know when talking to a couple of board members, they didn't. So I double checking to make sure that you get the link. But if you didn't get that, please let me know. And if you didn't, you can sign up for an information session. I think that'd be great. I believe I'm going to the first one, which I think is next Friday. Okay, okay, great. The other thing just that I wanted to share is this chart of important indigenous dates. As Stephanie mentioned earlier today, we did have our final Project Aware Professional Development from Star Commonwealth today. And this information was put together by Alexis Saret, who is the current director of the Project Aware Program, just to help our staff with the significance of upcoming indigenous holidays. So I believe that you all know that we are celebrating as a district Orange Shirt Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day on Monday, October 9. And Orange Shirt Day is typically September 30th, but that's a Saturday, so we didn't want to celebrate it on a Saturday. And September 29th is our homecoming Friday. So that's our traditional Moon and Gold Day. So in talking with our diversity and inclusion task force last year, the recommendation was made to celebrate Orange Shirt Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day on October 9. So I just thought that this was a nice document that Alexis has prepared. And I thought I would share that with you this evening. And I did, just to clarify, I did say we attended our last Project Aware PD. It was our last PD with Star Commonwealth. The Project Aware grant has been renewed for another five years, which is amazing. We're not yet sure exactly what that professional development will look like for the next five years. But we did wrap up our training with Star Commonwealth today.
That's a really amazing achievement.
Yeah.
And so kudos to the entire team.
Yes.
I just, I was so excited when I heard this.
Yes, us too. So, and that's all from my report this evening.
Thank you, Jennifer.
And that was last hour requested financial reports. Yes, I heard you this evening, the, excuse me, general fund and special service funds for revenue and expenditure comparing budgets actual for the month of August 2023 and August 2022. For general fund, revenue is at 4% of budget this year compared to 5% last year. And expenditures are at 10% of budget this year compared to 6% last year. Special service funds are self-sustaining sports. Revenue is at 10% of budget this year compared to zero last year. And expenditures are at 5% of budget this year compared to zero last year. For children's learning center, revenue is at 7% of budget compared to 8% last year. And expenditures are at 10% of budget compared to 9% last year. And our testing program has no revenue or expenditures for either year. Food services, revenue is at 5% of budget this year compared to 0% last year. And expenditures are at 0% this year compared to 0% last year. School store revenue is at 0% this year compared to 0% last year. And spending fees are at 0% this year compared to 8% last year. For treasures report, for general fund, on July 31st, we had cash balances of $1.3 million. For the month of August, we had receipts of just over $12 million and disbursements of $7.1 million. That brings us to the balance on August 31st of $13.2 million. For debt retirement funds, excuse me, on July 31st, we had the balance of $719,000. We had some tax revenue coming in the month of August of $10,000 and no disbursements for August. Brings us to the balance on August 31st of $739,000. And for capital projects funds, on July 31st, I'm comparing August, we had accounts of $19.8 million. We had interest income for August of $88,000 and disbursements of $2 million. That brings the balance on August 31st of $17.9 million.
Thank you. Next, we have our correspondence. And we have not received anything since our last meeting, which brings us to our citizens request to advance the board on any agenda or non-agenda items. And we are excited with Mason from Engage.
So I think we can all agree that teenagers are not exactly paragons of hygiene in general. And one thing that I, along with a lot of anecdotal people, have pointed out that I wanted to bring to the school. I provided you with a packet which details a cited study with 67 references, all of which are PubMed and Google Scholar listed, along with New Year's other credentials. And if you will refer to page four, in this case, I am particularly talking about paper towels versus hot air blow dryers. It states that, quote, "They found that paper towels reduce the number of all types of bacteria on the hands. However, hot air dryers increase the types of bacteria on the hands of all types." And we, like a lot of the student body, finds these dryers additionally very unpleasant. And so given that some bathrooms already have paper towels, I would request that all of the bathrooms be provided with paper towels as the alternative is literally less effective than doing nothing. Shaking your hands is more effective. Along with that, there is the physics problem of hot air dryers take these droplets and they mushroom cloud them out to hit other people in the bathroom, whereas paper towels would just, you know, all of the droplets go in the garbage. I know this is a rather minor problem, but I thought that maybe perhaps great people were so busy with bigger things that it maybe never crossed your mind. So I wanted to bring it to your attention. Thank you for your time. And also thank you for the free lunch.
Thank you, Mason. Next, we have Breagan Phillips.
I just wanted to address a simple issue that I think a lot of students have, including myself. Last year, the school doors at the front would open at 7:25 and we'd all be let in to go to our lockers and put our stuff in our lockers and get to our first classes. The time was bumped up to 7:30 this year. And I feel like I don't understand why we have to wait out there that long. I feel like the students need more time so that they can get to their lockers. And especially with the winter months coming in Michigan here, it's gonna be a lot harder on the students who have to stand out in that weather. And a lot of them cannot control when they go, when they're brought to the building because their parents have to drop off a certain time to get to work. I'm a member of NHS, so sometimes there's days where I'm able to go into the building a lot earlier. And it ends up working out a lot better just because I can, I have a lot more time to work with to get to my locker, to my first class. And a lot of other students don't get that. So even if you were to just lower the time to like 7:15 when the doors open, it would be a lot easier on all the other students because they just, again, have more time to operate and get to where they need to go. And I think it would just be a better change for the school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Breagan. We have Brandon Houser.
Good evening. My name is Brandon Houser. I'm a sophomore here at Mount Pleasant High School. I just wanted to address that last year, we had two and a half days to do our exams and testings at the end of each trimester. This year, we have shortened it down to two full days instead of the two and a half. And I was just worried about the fact that this is, in my opinion, increasing stress on our students. In a study done by Georgia State University's Dean of Policy Studies, Mary Beth Walker, half-days relieve the stress and make it easier for students to function throughout their week. This study, although touching on the fact that half-days should be every week, I'm not asking that. I'm asking that we just get these half-days for the end of the trimester. It'll relieve stress for our students. Although we have added days, I believe, to our school year that we have received off, I think that if we just take those days and make them into half-days for the end of the trimester, they could be more effective for our students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brandon. Next, we have Rowan Phillips first.
Hi, it's nice to see all you guys again. To start off, I'd like to say the use of the Chromebooks one-to-one, it's been fantastic, just the convenience and ease of it. I find it's benefited all of us. And it's made teaching in a classroom easier for a lot of teachers, I feel like. And then also just Power School's been fantastic too. And I feel like I'm still getting acclimated to the use of final forms, but I do see how that's gonna benefit us in the future, especially with it becoming more common practice. Actually, I really like how you guys are doing the policy amendments in public and then breaking it up. This summer, I had to do something similar with editing a document. Breaking it up is the best way to do it. But on the gender support plan, I hadn't actually heard about that before. And I'd want there to be more information about that out there for students and perhaps for parents as well, maybe teachers too. To touch on the aquatic center issue, both yes, please. We want this so bad, hasn't a member of the swim team? And then with the hot water dryers, obviously, the other towels are better, but we should not remove them because for some reason, there's always some sort of embarrassing situation where you just need a dryer. Like you slip in a puddle and your pants are wet. And it doesn't help a lot, but it helps a little bit and it's needed. And then actually, I think that the 7:30 opening of the doors, it's, that's like 18 minutes, 20 minutes. That is more than enough time to throw down, dallying and lulling around about. And then one issue that I find is also among the student body is there's a lot of casual abolism, mostly towards neurodivergent people. And it's come in a way where most people don't address it as an issue. And there hasn't been too many instances or any instances of like direct harm or bullying. But it's very pervasive and it's quite noticeable. And I'd say it clearly stems from a lack of information and understanding of neurodivergency. And although I wouldn't have a direct solution to that, I'd like that to be more conscious within student body, teachers, et cetera. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rowan. Next, we have Ty Phillips.
Good evening. This is the first school board meeting I've attended. So not really familiar with how everything goes here, but I'm just having a beer talk. As I said, my name is Ty Phillips. I've been here, enrolled here for four years. I'm a middle schooler, I have family that's come through Mount Pleasant. My dad has lived here his whole life. And I wonder why he doesn't want to move sometimes because, well, we're a big place. But I wanted to talk about the school parking passes, namely the fact that we have to pay for them. And so I guess I'll start with the beginning. September 4th, this is Willie, so I'll see him. And they had our wagon in that way with the school parking information. They wanted us to register parked vehicles to park in the facilities. Now, I don't view that as an issue. If they are wanting us to mark our vehicles that we are students at the school, I don't see that as an issue. But the one, the two issues that I have with this document that she sent those was, quote, "Parking permits are $15 a year or $5 a trimester." Next one being, quote, "Unregistered vehicles are subject to towing at the student's expense. If a tire boot is used in lieu of towing, a $20 fee will be assessed or removed." Now, I see that as quite problematic considering this is a public school and the way that public schools funded. So how are public schools funded? Well, they are funded through the local, state, and government. And this local and state government somewhat come together through the foundation allowance, which I found out through the House Fiscal Agency. They signed an article, it's called "The Basics of the Foundation Allowance Fiscal Year 2022-23 Update." And in that, they kind of outlined what foundation allowance is. Quote, "Proposal aid of 1994 created a new mechanism providing state funding to school districts in Michigan called the foundation allowance. Each school district is allocated a per-people amount in combined state and local funds to support school operations." And they also kind of outlined how this is funded. Quote, "The figure included local property tax revenue level for school operating purposes, state aid under the prior guaranteed tax base method, tax base method, inserting categorical." insurgent categorical funding." Now, the property tax isn't strictly all personal property, though it is non-homeside property. They define it as, in the article, they define it as such. Quote, "Non-homeside property is all property other than a taxpayer's principal residence or other limited types of exempt property under the revised school code," which is then linked. "Generally, non-homeside property includes commercial and industrial property, second homes, and rental places." Now, from what I could find, it did not outline, outline the state fund, but which I found through other means. At the state budget office on the michigan.gov website, there it is, a low pie chart, and they kind of outline where the state aid fund, which is why they fund the foundation allowance, where that money comes from. And this is for year 2022. It says, "Sales and use taxes make up 42.1%, federal revenue makes up 3.5%, and income taxes make up 16.6% of the funding." And that foundation allowance, from what I found, is the majority of public schools to get their money. Federal sources, about being a smaller amount. I found at the National Center for Education.
You have three minutes to talk. You have three minutes, but I want to get to your point a little bit.
Oh, okay, I apologize.
So don't worry.
Well, so then I will go to the revenue by source, which I found is 69.2% of the revenues of public schools, or this school, gets is from the state, local, and federal sources. The other being financing sources, which is bonds, and which are elected by citizenry and are paid back through debt management. So I question why the school needs to charge us to pay for its facilities while, and of course, the GI Tech Center is not doing that. They're just saying, "Come get a pass and just put it on your card." I don't, so I question why Mount Pleasant High School has to charge us to park our facilities.
Thank you, Dad. Next, we have John Greinke.
Good evening. I'm here as a result that I recognize that the school board is the highest authority in this district, and I'm asking for your help. In front of me, I have the Michigan State Board of Education Model and Type Onewee Policy. With me on air in three minutes, I'm just going to skim through some of this. It states that "To protect the rights of all students and staff in a safe and secure building environment, the Board of Education prohibits acts of bullying, including cyberbullying, harassment, and other forms of aggression, and violence." On August 30th, my daughter was assaulted by another student. She was walking the track with students from other grades, whom we were told by the assistant principal from the middle school that they don't interact with each other at lunch, which they do. I've told her numerous times to try to ignore the words that are put in other mouths, that, just walk away, walk away. Well, eventually, Chastity's friend, who was walking with her, turned around and told the girl that that was enough. And that girl got a hold of Chastity's friend. Chastity tried breaking it up because there were no staff members around. She got pulled in by her hair, dragged to the ground. She did what she could to get away from it without laying a damn punch on the kid. It took her five times to not answer questions to staff members because she wanted to be present before they finally allowed her to contact me. Hence why I was here last month about the dotted phone policy. I would have not known had she not been able to contact me by her phone. I rush in, my boss gives me okay to bring a rig to work, talked to the assistant principal, and he assured me that, you know, after a long holiday weekend, come back on that Tuesday, talk to the girls, apologize, everything, we are. Tuesday, she messages me and says, "This girl's bothering me. She's making vague threats. She's threatening to whip my butt. Daddy told me not to snitch, not to tell, and the little stuff, but I'm in fear of my life." So I told her to tell. She told three different staff members, including the vice principal, who in turn did not do a single darn thing about it. Wednesday, she went back to school. After they did their photo session, the girl jumped her from behind, swung her head off the damn floor, put her in the hospital. Upon talking to the vice principal, he wanted to play the blame the victim game and gaslight her and I and her mother, telling her, "Well, if you would have been involved in that, this wouldn't have happened." So do you go around telling students who were raped, "You would have gotten raped if you weren't wearing these gloves"? Is that what we're doing? I'm sorry, but I find that a form of bullying towards her, too. He did not want to discuss what happened to the other girl, which in the policy, it states that we do have the right to know of both parents of, or the parents involved of all the children will get written form, things in the mail stating what was the outcome. We ain't received nothing. But yet, the first altercation, where she didn't even put her hands on anybody, that half-day that I picked her up, she got a, we got a letter in mail that she got suspended for half a day for assault and battery. In order for it to be assault and battery, you gotta use something to whip somebody's behind in with. And that's according to Michigan Court Law. This other girl was aggravated stalking her in school, which is a felony. All through Michigan Court laws and your policies, this stuff is not supposed to happen, but yet the school failed to protect my daughter. So I'm asking something to be done for this. I don't care, more officers, I feel something should be happening to the vice principal who seemed to just gaslight us on this matter. She don't know what to do. She can't defend herself. She's told, she's put her hands on another student, tried to get away. She's going to get suspended. I think we can do better for our kids. We need to. Real quick, my daughter wants to say something to you guys.
Hello, my name is Chastity Dennis, and I attend Mount Pleasant Middle School. My dad has basically said what has been going on, and I feel, I wanted to say how I feel. I don't feel safe at school because this girl threatened me. For example, when I leave my house and go to stores, stuff like that, I don't feel safe. Also, when I walk down those hallways, I feel that I'm not safe. When I told these three adults, they said it would be handled. It had gotten worse to the point, I don't even want to go back to school. How many threats have been made against me, of what has happened? And I want this to be handled as best as we can. I know bullying is not going to stop. But if somebody is getting assaulted or harassed, that other person should not get away with it. Something should be done about it. Half of the students at my school don't even want to be there because they don't feel safe. They don't feel like they're learning because of being picked on. A lot of students nowadays think that school is about how rich or poor you are and if you like somebody or not. And I feel like it's wrong. School should be all about learning and not bullying, not being harassed, not being assaulted, and it should be dealt with.
Real quick, I do have a video of the first altercation. I do have a video of a meeting with the vice principal. So I'm not taking this matter lightly anymore. I should not have to worry about changing districts with her, possibly homeschooling with her when she needs to be here socializing friends and her peers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Chastity. Next, we have Nicole Haddel.
Hello, my name is Nicole Haddel. I teach at Mount Pleasant Middle School. First, I want to say I am so proud of so many, and I have a lot of them as seventh graders, and I am so proud of what they're doing here and how they're going about it. So, thank you for that. What I'm here for is, I am also a member of the Human Rights, the Isabel County Human Rights Committee, and we have an event this coming weekend, Saturday, from 3 to 6. It's our annual peace event. The United Nations has declared September 21st to be an International Day of Peace. And so, and the county will celebrate it on the 23rd with our Let Peace Ring event. We have invited all of our Mount Pleasant Public Schools peacemakers. Individually, they've received letters from the Human Rights Committee back in June, I believe. And so, we're expecting a good turnout, and you are all cordially invited also. It's at Island Park. It starts at the county buildings. There's a peace walk down to Island Park, and then it ends around 6 with a candlelight vigil. And there will be prizes and food and music, and you are invited. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Hughard Campbell.
I would love to talk about the lunches offered at the lower, at the elementary schools. Here at the high school, we have the privilege of the lunch that we have over there, but the students who attend the young, the elementary schools, my little brother included, do not have access to such a quality lunch. I know that we switched providers a while back, the, what provided the food for the high school and middle school, but I don't know if that same change was made at the elementary school level as the lunches that are served there continue to be subpar. Okay, thank you.
That concludes our public comment section of our board meeting. We can move on to our consent and change agenda. First, we have the approval of the minutes of the August 21st, 2023 meeting. Is there a motion to approve this? So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everybody. We also have to approve our bills. And, hold on, I'm sorry, it just dug me up. It's a minute. I need to get in there.
An amount of $2,897,028.37.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve our bills?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everybody. And the new business, we have the approval of our wellness policy that we talked about earlier today, the policy 5707.
And will that be approved, policy flags, if necessary? Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then we have, I need to, here we go, our resignation.
I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, we would like to forward to accept the resignation of Jenny Arnold from West River.
Sorry to hear this. Is there a motion to accept the resignation?
So, so moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have a donation acknowledgement.
So here, we're back this evening. You have information on a donation of $3,000 to Ginnan Elementary from four energy partners from Babong. We also have a donation from Modern Woodman to the Pauline Library for $350. And then another donation that is going actually to Fancher Elementary from Graff Buick James C. Cadillac, and it's for a student who won an art contest that they had, and the family elected to donate the money. It's $500 from Graff to Fancher Elementary. So I ask you that you acknowledge those three donations.
Is there a motion to acknowledge the three donations?
So moved with next.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for the continued generosity of our community.
And then the last item on our new business is field trip requests from the marching band. And actually, as we review those, they're just day-long trips. There aren't any overnight trips, so we're just, you actually don't have to approve them. Just see where their competition, their schedule will take them this fall. And we have already approved, they're overnight trip in November to Indianapolis for the National Dance of the Area Competition. So I believe we're all set there. But they're a missing group right now.
Now, we have to go to our board of education discussion.
This last Thursday, I spent my morning in Lansing at my Response to Hate Conference, which is an annual event sponsored by the Michigan Department of Civil Rights. This year was focused on anti-hate legislation. But over and over again, the folks who were there, who were speaking or reading sessions, pointed out that, you know, we can't make hate illegal. We can't, you know, or we can't eradicate hate through law that it starts, you know, one person at a time, and it starts at an individual level. And I was just really proud to be sitting there thinking about all the work that our district is already doing, that has been doing, and that is continuing to do on that front, especially the diversity of aid included in task force.
Thank you, Jessica. I'd like to take a minute to thank our students. It's wonderful to have you here and hearing your voices and your opinions, no matter how, you know, small to the big stuff. I think it's just, it's just really nice to be able to hear directly from you. So I hope you keep on coming and encourage others to come. It takes some nerves to show up and talk to the mic, and so, thank you, everybody. All right, I think that returns our meeting for today.